Hi Jenna.
I didn't realize I was muted. How are you?
Good, and you?
I am alright. Starting to feel nostalgic. Flash something, I don't know. How are you? You're hanging in there?
He has been busy.
Yeah.
Yep, 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 yep. We have no lack of things to do, right Audra?
Not at all. We are on just.
Yeah, we're on YouTube also.
Oh, and I'm, I'm wondering if you don't need me as a panelist. I'm more than happy to be on the other list, just for the sake of like not. Yeah.
Hmm, let's, let's see how, let's see how dramatic.
I know.
Yeah, you want to be, you want to.
Just want to throw that out there, I'm happy either way.
Understood.
Out of sight does not mean out of mind.
Alright, here's Taylor.
Oh, good. And I know Mark's coming on, so. Because I talked to him just a little bit ago.
Hey guys.
Hello, Mr. Benzie.
Sorry I'm late.
It's alright.
You have one person with a hand up, I don't. You know.
Yes, Vicky, she chatted here. Yeah, Vicky, we know you can hear us. Thank you for reminding us, so I appreciate it. Before I make a complete fool of myself.
Oh, Mark is in.
Is he?
Oh, there we go. Mark's got his hand up, promoted panelist.
Okay.
I've got my hand up.
Your real hand, not your, not raising your hand, right? We could bring Jeremy and also Allison. Because we are just at six o'clock. Okay. Are we ready? We're on YouTube, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Good, okay, welcome everyone. This is the Camden Select Board's workshop for March 8th, 2021. Per. Our agenda, I'll explain in a second the format, but just to give a five-minute capsule elevator speech of where we are and what we're trying to accomplish this evening. As we all know, we started with receiving four submissions for potential use of our Tannery property. The Select Board agreed to turn that over to our Community and Economic Development Committee to do an analysis report for our benefit to support the next step, which was our first workshop for the Select Board to interview those four submitters' proposals with the, using the CDEC analysis to back up. During the meeting, we tried to incorporate as much as we could, public, but given the, you know, for the timing, we weren't able to get all the questions answered during the workshop and certainly all those that were submitted to us prior to that workshop from many of you. We, in that regard, we asked the public to submit all questions to us if you had already, great, if not, any questions by February 26th, a week or so ago, and since that time, I know Audra and Jeremy in particular, put a lot of time into proposing or drafting the answers to those questions, or at least input for them, and they're posted on, currently on our town website. This evening's workshop is really focused on trying to solicit as much as possible public input with respect to support or not for any of the four options that we have on the table. Tomorrow night, of course, we have a normally scheduled Select Board meeting, not a workshop, where we will discuss further the next steps, proposed next steps for this Tannery initiative. So during this, this workshop, we would love to have a public, raise your hand on here on, and we'll bring you in to have a chat with us in current terms of your comments and input regarding a favorite option or not. And I would ask that if you come on, would you please identify yourself, please, your residency is important. And also, we would respectfully request to try to maintain comments to about a three-minute time period, is that normal? So we can get as many people in as possible. If there's time left and somebody wants to come back in, we'll, we'll see how our timing goes, but that's what we'd like to do tonight. Any other comments from the board before we start the, bringing in some of our friends?
No, that sounded good.
Okay. Do we have any attendees who have raised their hand yet, Allison? I don't see any yet.
Yeah, we've got Christian, Christians had hand raised.
Okay, oh, yes, I see them. Okay, Allison, I'll let you control the floodgates, please, and let's just begin the workshop.
Great, so.
Somebody ripped their hair off.
Very dramatic code zipping.
Yeah.
Oh, I meant to put myself on mute before I did that, but.
That's quite all right. Hello, Christian.
Hi.
Christian, if you would kindly introduce yourself and your residency, appreciate it.
Yeah, my name's Christian Gerquist, and I live at 108 Washington Street, which is at the corner of Rossin and and Washington, right, right budding the park.
Okay.
One of those two houses. I just wanted to say that I, one of the reasons I bought the house was because of the park. That I, I was like, wow, this is great, I'm looking for a house. My wife is originally from Camden and her family, most of her family still lives here, so we were kind of looking to move close to them, and I grew up having a park very near me. And I saw this house and said, great, worked out, you know? And so I wanted to say that I'm putting myself strongly behind the Tannery Park Initiative. As a park and to the point that my family and I are willing to make, put substantial resources to making sure that the pump track phase of that initiative becomes a reality. So that's, that's.
That's great, Christian. Well, first of all, we appreciate your comments and obviously your interest, you should be interested, you're right, you're a neighbor. That's exactly what we want to hear is comments like yours tonight, and.
Yeah, I mean, it's very, very important to me that that was an aspect that really kind of like, I, I mean, we'll say that was, that was to me the, the closer to the, to buying the house.
Okay. Well.
Alright. Next person?
Christian, we'll talk to you soon, take care.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. And to change role to attendee, we'll bring in Eleanor Mason Peters. It appears that for the most part, Zoom does a great job of putting people in the order.
Okay.
But they raised their hand, so in case anybody's wondering. Who, how we're picking them.
We're not throwing darts at the wall, right?
Right, we're gonna go with the easy way.
Okay.
And I may, to speed this along for the next time, maybe what I'll do is start by, as one person and kind of gets near the end, we'll bring in the next person, but leave them muted until.
That's a great plan. I think Eleanor is trying.
Eleanor.
Eleanor is trying to connect.
Maybe I can go and try to ask to start video and ask to unmute and see if that.
Okay.
Oh, here we go. Oh, maybe not.
She's still muted.
I, I.
There she is. There she is. Hi Eleanor. Eleanor, you're muted. You're muted.
I think she knows.
Okay.
I'm gonna go ahead and read the.
There she is.
There I am. Do you see me?
Yes.
Good.
Yes.
Um, I want to read the letter that I think each of you received.
Eleanor, could you please introduce yourself for every, Eleanor, could you please introduce yourself and your resident?
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's right.
My name is Eleanor Mason Peters. I live at 42 Union Street in Camden. And I've lived in Camden for over forty years.
Great.
And my whole family's grown up here and we've seen many changes and I've been a part of the Tannery, Friends of Tannery group for five years now, or maybe six, and we really had our hearts and our, we worked hard to pull it together to create a beautiful little community park for that part of town. So I'll just read you my letter, and of course, I am for that. We've altered the plan a little bit since the beginning because we were hearing from you and other people that you wanted more than just a park. You wanted something commercial, you wanted something a little residential. So we consider the farmer's market a commercial effort. And we have also incorporated into our plan that a habitat for humanity to build some, a group of small houses there, which would not interfere with us actually doing the park also. So I'll tell you my feelings, and then I have a question at the end about the process of how we're doing this, if I have time. The former Tannery property is a perfect location for a small community park. Many people use it for recreational activities now. Bike riding, strolling along the river, dog walking, wildflower studies and picnicking. The farmer's market has created a permanent home where people meet, eat and greet. For five years, the Friends of Tannery Park worked on a plan to create a town sanctioned park. A town committee was formed to work on a plan and was endorsed by the Select Board. Since then, there is a new town manager, economic developer and Select Board. They have decided there are better uses for this property. The town has put out requests for ideas for the property since they've gotten a grant based on the Friends of Tannery Park concept for a recreational area. Right now, there are four plans being presented to the town to once again decide what to do with this property. One of the plans is the Friends of Tannery Park Plan, which is now a mixed-use plan of small business, recreational and residential. As a member of this group, I am affirming our continued efforts. Please show your support for this proposal presented by the Friends of Tannery Park. For more information, check the Town of Camden website, Tannery Park. And obviously, my feelings are very strong because we have been working on this for a few years. We have actually done some fundraising and we were kind of all set to go until the upheaval of the whole town government, I'll have to say that, and so we're gonna continue and because we really feel strongly about it, and we have gotten a lot of positive feedback from the neighborhood, people in the neighbors, people at the farmer's market, people on the other side of town. I live over on Union Street and I think it would be a perfect thing for the town.
Thank you, thank you Eleanor, thank you very much.
And I just, can I have, ask a question about the process, or should I save that for later?
We want to try to get a lot of people in, if you don't mind. I want you to ask the question. Have you noted, we'll probably have time to come back to you.
Okay, that's fine.
Thank you so much Eleanor, thanks, good to see you.
You're welcome.
Next is Sarah. I'm not sure, Sarah.
Hi, I'm Sarah Holland. And I just have a couple of.
Sarah, your residency, please.
Oh, Camden, Maine, at 80 Mountain Street in Camden.
Thank you very much.
And I had comments about two different, two of the different proposals. One is on the Tannery Park Proposal. I hear a lot of people talking about, oh, we have so much green space already. We have Shertail, we have Lake Park, we have this, we have that. But I wanted to point out that one of the unique things about this particular site is that it's flat, and that lends itself to certain activities that those other parks just don't lend themselves to. In particular, biking, skateboarding, a possible ice skating, ice rink. All those kinds of activities you can't do at Lake Park or Shertail Park or Beauchamp Point or many other, I mean, we're blessed to have all these different places, but none of them are conducive to tricycles and that kind of activity that I see happening over there all the time. So I just wanted to point out, there's a unique topography and in fact, the uniqueness that it's already hardscaped and you already have these slabs that can be utilized as part of the plan. My other comment has to do with the Crane's Port proposal and the workshops, the nineteen workshop sheds that he has proposed. In his last presentation, he pointed out that those are meant to be, in order to keep costs down, they weren't going to be insulated. And they weren't going to have water. And that the tenants could insulate them if they wanted to, and they could put in heat if they wanted to. And I have some concerns about that in terms of how they would be insulated, how they would meet building codes, how would they meet, you know, energy codes? If people were just kind of doing it haberdashingly, whatever, sticking a little fiberglass here and getting a big gas modine heater there, it seems counter to the town's commitment to climate change and energy.
Right.
And I just think, I just wanted to point out that I think that's problematic to enforce how those would be insulated and to enforce how they would be heated and, and I'm skeptical that anybody would want to spend that much energy, money doing it right, and especially since they're going to be on these helical supports, means the whole floor system is out of the ground, and so how do you insulate a floor after the floor system has already been installed? It's, it's really impossible to do that as an after the fact kind of a.
Right.
So that's it.
Thank you, excellent, excellent question, Sarah. Thank you. On to Ms. Chen, please.
Okay, hi. Okay, my name's Pat Chen and I live at 281 Washington Street in Camden. One of the questions I did have, I mean, I think there's a big need for more affordable housing as far as my understanding is, and I'm all for that. One of the questions I do have though, as far as the first plan goes that I read about for an affordable housing building would be, what type, and you know, I don't know when or where in the process this would come into play. But one of the things that I would have a concern about is that there is a firm protocol set up for vetting applicants that come in to that are taken as residents in the building, because I think it would be great to be able to meet more of this objective of having affordable housing. I think it's a real deficit all over our country. But in the meantime, I would be concerned about propagating other issues while trying to solve the affordable housing issue. So that was one of the things. The other question I had about the first plan is how much could it be changed potentially as far as the number of units that the building would have? I like the idea of a small building simply because I think it gives us more volume of affordable housing. But that said, it also looks a little tight right now without knowing more than just having looked at the plan that is out on the website. And I thought, I was concerned about the parking, would there be enough parking, is it really feasible to have just one parking space for every type of unit that that place would offer? And of course, I like the idea of keeping the farmer's market there. I think that's very important as well as if there's a playground or some type of picnic area that they showed. But if there was any way maybe to amend that plan a little so you could give a bit more breathing room to that Camden's farmer market, I think that would be preferable. Realizing that decreasing the number of units at a place like that would also be decreasing revenue, but I'm really not clear either how much the town is expecting or hoping to get for revenue from any of these proposals. And I think this was brought up already, I don't know what the answer is, but perpetuity of the affordable housing status on the building like that, I would want to make sure that that was, you know, until the end of time essentially.
Right.
And the other, you know, if you can't do something on that type of scale, the other piece I thought was good was if Habitat could maybe expand the amount of buildings or houses in the area, so some type of combination of the Tannery Friends with the Habitat Homes, and maybe if you could put in another three even. That would give you some basis for more affordable housing, not on the same level as the building, but I think it would make more sense if you end up going that way to add more homes to the plan, and also to really get a plan because the Tannery Friends proposal needs a lot more detail, I think. That's pretty sparse, and but yeah, those would be my hopes for the area, because I think in both cases, you're still maintaining some type of green space. The Camden Farmer's Market is only out there on Wednesdays and Saturday mornings, so all the other time I see it as being open for the public. And I think in the winter, if, I don't know if it was that one plan that talked about flooding it for skating, I think that would be great, something like that. In either case, so. Those are my preferences, thanks.
Thank you, Pat, all great questions, many of which I still wrestle with myself, but thank you so much for that input. I'd like to move on to Jane Babbitt. Thanks, Pat.
Hi, I'm Jane Babbitt. I live at 10 Cove Road. I was in Camden. I was able to attend maybe one of the last planning meetings of the Tannery Park Group, and I was really impressed by the number of people from the community that they got together. They had hashed out a great plan, getting input from the community on what the community wanted. And I think their plan, while maybe not finalized to the nth degree as far as what it will take financially, overall, it's a great plan. It includes what the community wants and adding in Habitat Housing. And I'm confident that even though they don't have all the numbers in place, once that plan is implemented, the fundraising will go smoothly and the needs will be met. But I especially like that plan because it came from members of the community and had been endorsed by the Select Board once it was decided on, so. I think that's the best option. Thank you.
Thank you, Jane, thank you very much. Mr. McCafferty. I use the term loosely, Patrick.
Yeah, the Mr. part. Hold on, am I not on video? I've got video.
Yeah, I don't see you. Now I see you.
Yep, thank you. So my name's Patrick McCafferty. I'm a resident of Camden, property owner in Rockport, father of three sons in the community, and I've lived here all my life. And I'm a local masonry contractor. Am I still on? Says I'm having.
You're doing, you're doing great.
Yeah, I just saw the, says my internet connection's unstable.
No, you're doing great.
Alright, great. So with ample respect to Christian, Ms. Mason Peters, and everybody that's spoken so far. I don't think we need more park space. I feel like we have kind of underutilized the park space we already have. There's not a huge line at Lake Beach or the Montessori School, etc., to use to swing. And I can lay out freely at Shertail. Sometimes even with my shirt off and no one will see me. So I'm mostly kidding. So people have always said that, you know, our biggest export is youth. Here in Maine, I've heard that complaint over and over again, so I'm really interested in possible solutions to that problem. I want to see something there that would excite, and more things in Camden in general that would excite and stimulate action and innovation. So of all the proposals that I saw, I liked Mike Mullins. And I think Mike Mullins is pretty sharp in terms of, you know, he, he seems to be a doer. There's multiple projects that he's already implemented, and that's certainly the type of person that I'd like to see take a shot at development opportunities in, in this area. So I really liked this proposal. I liked it also because of the possible space, you know, short-term and affordable for the trades. I, and you know, for, for makers, doers and, and people who are working on projects, which I, I think are just, it's just a tremendously growing segment of, you know, our community. So. Yeah, speaking as parent, speaking as a member of the community, I, I would like to, and speaking as a tradesman, I would like to see Mike's proposal go forward, because it does offer solutions to a lot of the things that I think are problems here. I believe, I believe that's all.
Thank you, Patrick, appreciate it very much. Just before we bring on the next person, there was a question from someone about the confusion about Michael's proposal, Crane's Port, that is, being also called Tannery Park. Be careful when we're talking, just, Patrick, you were fine, talking to Crane's Port, to, or Michael Mullins, that makes it clear that we're not talking about eight park versus Tannery Park. Let's try to stay away from that term. As we speak, going forward. Thank you, Patrick. Take care and talk to you soon.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Smith.
Hello, hello. I'm Stephanie Smith and I live at 210 Washington Street. Start my, okay. And I live at 210 Washington Street, and I would just like to put a strong support in for any plan that has affordable housing. The Camden Comprehensive Plan made that loud and clear when it was written. There was a dire need for that. So any of the plans that increases our housing stock, I think is critical, and I agree with the last speaker, we have plenty of parks. We have a wealth of outdoor opportunities right now. As much as it'd be great to have another park, I just think you have to say which is more important, housing or park? And if we want to be a diverse community and have people be able to live here and work here, we need to have more housing. So if Habitat could put more houses on, maybe they don't have capacity right now. I thought I heard them say they have limited. So if Habitat could put more houses on, maybe they don't have capacity right now. I thought I heard them say they have limited capacity. Could they in two more years add more housing? Is there a way um they can partner with another function? Clearly, the um, the farmer's market is a plus, and I agree that it's often uh. Open for other functions when they're not there. So I would just say we have a critical need for affordable housing. It's gotten worse since the Comprehensive Plan was written, and I'd support any plan that adds more housing. And I think we can rest assure that Habitat will have uh in perpetuity arrangements.
Thank you, Stephanie. Good to see you. Thanks very much. Appreciate it.
Yep.
Um, but uh Bob, could you identify yourself, please? You're muted, Bob. You're muted. That's much better.
My first time.
You did well.
Okay, that's it. No. Well, I'll guess that I live on Thomas Street, uh, very near the park and uh. Have watched his progress for years, been very involved in it. In the early days, back in two thousand and ten, when we acquired the Riverwalk. Land, um, this was totally a neighborhood effort. We had organized workdays. Cleaned up all the invasives and made that into a quite a nice path on its own, and then we did get grant money later. To make it wheelchair accessible and it's a beautiful little walkway. So I am totally in favor of the Tannery project. I was shocked when after all the committees, we. The Tannery Work Group came along and worked for years really for. And their proposal seemed sound and it seemed like we almost had a town consensus. The Select Board was uh with it, the neighborhood liked it. Um, I was perplexed when suddenly that seemed to unravel and we were back at at square one. And I feel like if the, there was a time when the Tannery was surrounded by a chain link fence. And just sitting there and it looked horrible, um, felt horrible, looked terrible, terrible and. One night the Select Board uh was petitioning to take the fence down and they did. And this, within days. People came, skateboarders came and dog walkers came and. I just think it's a natural fit for this end of town to have a flat park like that where you can throw a football and. Move around freely like that. The farmer's market is just super. A good, great fit and of course the addition of Habitat is just more added to the beauty of that park. If you just look at that site, I think it just. Demands to be a a Camden Town Park.
Mm-hmm.
And I don't think we need more buildings or anything like that. It's just, it's a beautiful spot and uh. I'm all in favor of the Friends of Tannery proposal.
Thank you, Robert. Appreciate you coming on and doing a great job with Zoom for your first time, you said?
First time, yeah.
I'm proud of you. Thank you so much.
Okay.
Allison, I don't think we have any other hands up at the moment. Um, maybe, um, um, well, yes, we do. Yes, we do.
Where they come. All right. Maybe everybody, does everybody, I wonder, know how to raise their hand?
Please, you're the expert. Give them some instruction just in case.
Um, we're gonna bring on Dr. McKenzie here. Um, what's the, for the, we have somebody that's calling in from a phone. What's the code again for calling, if you're calling in from a phone to raise your hand? Is it star nine?
Yeah.
Or is that?
Is, I think it's starting. I don't have. I have to go on the website to check it out. I think.
Either star nine or stars.
I can, while we're doing that, while we're bringing on, I can check that.
And we could also just bring, you know, if that fails, we can just bring on the person that's on the phone and.
Um, yeah, we can do that. Um.
But we do have the Dr. McKenzie here. I can ask to start the.
Of course.
It's star nine for those calling to raise.
Dr. McKenzie. Here he comes. There he is.
Can you hear me now?
I can definitely hear you.
Okay.
Um, my wife and I are not full-time residents of Camden. Uh, we split our time between Dallas, Texas and Camden. When we looked at retirement about a decade ago, we looked at many, many communities up and down the East Coast from. Boston, where we lived for many years, uh, all the way up to Northern Maine. We have felt like Camden is a great gift. That we have been given. Um, ours is perhaps a more a thousand foot view than the nitty gritty of some of the. Of the folks that have shared tonight, but I think uh we have been supporters uh and are supporters of Mr. Resick and the Friends of Tannery Park. I agree with the last uh questioner that the the greener and the and the more uh user friendly the park is, the better it will be. Um, just an aside, um. Myself, uh, when I was younger, certainly supported Habitat for Humanity, working at a number of sites. Uh, here in Texas, from Dallas County to Denton County to Collin County. And there are still are great uh uh things being done by the by the Habitat for Humanity folks in this part of the country. I'm not so familiar with the, with the proposal for Habitat in that park, but I I guess that would be something to consider. Um, the one thing I can tell you from my wife and I's perspective, when we were looking for affordable communities to to to. To find a place to to live, um, Camden was affordable. It was beautiful. It was. It was perfect from the library to the amphitheater, to the harbor, uh, to the tour of homes, uh, et cetera, et cetera. It just kept getting better and better. Um, I think the greener and the more accessible the park is, uh, I liked the last uh uh. Uh, questioners up, suggestion that it would be great to have something for the kids to play in. Um, I I don't mean to go on and on, but again, we're supporters of the of the. Of the Friends of Tannery Park and the proposals that they have put forward. I've read all of Mr. Resick's uh uh emails. And the various proposals. Um, I think they all have good merit. Uh, we tend to come down on the, again, on the Friends of Tannery Park.
Thank you, doctor. Thank you for for sharing your time with us. We appreciate it.
Yes, sir. Thank you for having me.
Of course, my pleasure. Um, who do we have? Um, Mr. Bennett.
Can you hear him?
Yes, I can.
Thank you. And I just want to give my compliments to.
You, yeah, you're a little, you're a little soft sounding, Ben, uh, James.
Let me try that.
Try try your volume. Get a little closer to the speaker.
Is that better?
Yes, it's it's fine. Just just, yes, go ahead.
Um, well, first I just wanted to uh thank the Select Board for tackling this difficult problem. And uh I I live at one oh nine Washington Street. Um, I've been living in Camden since uh twenty sixteen. Prior to that, I was a resident in Bath. And the the um. The overall, my my perspective on these three different, there are really three different proposals, each one. Um, well, two of them at least give give the opportunity for the Habitat, for humanity to join in. Um, so I think, I haven't heard anybody speak against Habitat, uh, putting a couple of houses in here, so we can agree on that. Piece, I think, across the community. Um, you know, being a resident in a butter. Um, I've noticed uh the extent of the use of the park. And uh I've seen, uh, unfortunately. Uh, the city's uh promotion of that use has been negative. There, I mean, if you look across the street now. And how that land is being used, that's hardly benefiting the town or any resident in it right now. Um, it's been used as a construction site, as a, as a quarry and a. A storage area for people who needed to park big trucks and so forth. And every time that happens, that defeats the use that the kids and the people in this area generally uh prefer to see. I've even seen police chasing kids off that property because they were using their bikes. And running up the side of that pile of dirt, which I, when I was a kid, that's what I would have been doing. It's a great use of the property. Um, and so, you know, the bump track has a lot of pull on me. Um, I want to get to the point about the uh, the financial impact, and I know. I think part of what turned this situation around, I bought my house two years ago. There was a lot of strong support for turning this uh region into the the park and the. Farmer's Market that that we've been considering here. But the financial impact seems to, or the notion that we can somehow make. Uh, financial gain for the town out of turning that thing into a high-density. Housing development or and in more of an industrial site the way it was originally. I think that needs to be looked at from the standpoint of the broader perspective. Of what's that, what that's going to do to the property values in the surrounding area. If you put uh that, the uh housing development in there, the high-density housing development, forty-eight units. You don't have the room for parking. What happens when it snows? Where do all those cars go, the the number that you can possibly fit in there? The the developer is offering TIF financing. I've had experience with TIF financing. You're not going to see the revenue come out of that. Uh, that's going to go into the pockets of the developers. And there's no long-term commitment on the part of the developers to even stay and see the project through. They got no uh proposal for putting onsite um support. Um, you know, for the tenants, maintenance people, or any kind of building manager onsite. There's just so many. Negative aspects to that. Now, I fully appreciate the need to have affordable housing. But I think there's a lot of different ways to skin that cat and turning that beautiful piece of property. Into an eyesore and not only that, a very difficult area to manage.
Right.
Um, is not the right answer. So anyway, and as far as the Crane's Port goes, I like the innovation behind it. I think it could be made to work. Um, I think it needs to be modified to include the. The, or I should say, it should be enhanced to include the uh Farmer's Market and the other uses that are already existing.
Thank you, James. I'm gonna have to uh go on to our next uh person here, but I.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Um, Allison, I think we have uh Anita.
Oh, no, we've got Ben Ellison is next in line, but then.
I'm sorry. I should be looking at you right there, bud.
Right.
Good to see you, Ben. Go ahead.
Thanks. Uh, Ben Ellison, I live at two Bisbee Street, which I'm about a few blocks away from the Tannery property. Um, first lived up here in the early seventies and I've owned a home here since seventy-eight. I really like Melville. I care about it and Camden. Um, and I'm, I'm grateful, first of all, to. Everyone who got four interesting proposals in front of the town. Um, and I think any one of them could, you know, will benefit Melville and the town. Um, I'm particularly pleased that all of the proposals include space for the Farmer's Market. And I suspect that any one of them could, with a little um encouragement, include. Um, a small preschool playground like what Paul Cartwright talked about in the first work session. Um, so that's all great. Um, but the proposal that excites me the most is um. The Tannery Park. Quote mark, affordable, industrial, eco-village.
Thanks for the clarification, Ben.
That is a mouthful of terms, but um I I I read all proposals and I also attended the Zoom session. Uh, Mike Mullins gave along with a very experienced designers he hired. Um, and I was really impressed. Um, in fact, I second everything Patrick McCafferty said. And I think part of, I think what excites me about it is. Um, I think that wonderful feeling in my neighborhood, Saturday mornings when the market is open. Um, this is the proposal that would provide more of that. Um, I mean, the the idea is, you know, single-story work buildings for craftsmen and artists. Inventors and so forth, and the whole design principle is that it be all public. People are gonna be able to walk their dogs through that whole thing. It's designed that way, wants to be that way. Because they feel that's what'll attract tenants and make for a good interaction of different kind of makers with each other. It also includes really significant public space, a barn for the Farmer's Market and other events. A skating rink and they have this whole vision of kind of Friday night um skating with music that. I think a lot of people find intriguing. Uh, by the way, that Zoom session they did is online at your site. Um. So in, also incidentally, I think I learned from that session that those buildings will be insulated. But the heating part of it is what's optional, and I think it'll be a negotiation. You know, with a tenant over whether they do their own or the developer does it and charges more rent, that sort of thing. Um. So. Uh, the question I think might put it well to you at the last work session is what goes where? And and my question is, uh, I can't see this working the way they think it can work, and I believe it can. Any anywhere but here, you know, at Tannery Park, which it's all, I believe, doesn't even need a zoning change. I do recognize the need for affordable housing. Wonder if that couldn't be done at Sagamore Farm. Um, I love the idea of the bike track, but couldn't that make more sense at the Snow Bowl where there's. Bike shop and bike trails and lots of parking. Am I running out of time, Bob?
A little bit, but they're giving another fifteen seconds.
Uh, I also think that Mike's proposal ends up more revenue taxes and more upfront payment for the town. And and final thing is, and I don't mean this in a mean way, um, a butters who. Didn't realize that this sort of thing could happen on that site. Um, I don't know how that happened. As I say, I've been here since seventy-eight and I never for a moment. Not thought that something like this, any one of these proposals could happen on that site. Uh, once the town finally figured out what they wanted to. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ben. Good to see you. Um, on to Anita, please.
I don't know if you can see me.
No, I see.
Probably just as well.
Now, don't go there.
Oh, okay.
Your video's not working, but you're.
Okay. Um, I uh glad to hear Ben Ellison's thoughts.
Anita, we all know you, but please introduce yourself.
Oh, sorry, excuse me. I'm Anita Beresia Scott and I live at eight, at twenty-one Ames Terrace. Um, I am pretty much a neighbor of uh this site and I have been. I I've been lived in Camden for over twenty-eight years and have been and um working on the. Have actually been a presence on these uh various work groups um set up by the Select Board through the years. So I'm pretty familiar with this site and I would agree with Ben, giving that long view that um. Uh, I didn't come recently to Camden, so I don't see that lot as an empty lot. Um, I have always understood it to ha- have a lot of benefits in terms of. The way it can be developed and the way it is zoned for development. I would love to see a park there like the Friends of Tannery Park are recommending. But there is a part of me, a pretty strong part of me that really feels that. Um, this site has a lot more potential. Um, for the community in terms of how it can be developed and how it can um. How it can stimulate the economy. I'm very strongly in favor of the Crane's Port proposal. I especially like the fact that it uh supports the creative economy. And I think that there's probably an unfamiliarity with why are we talking about the creative economy as a thing? But I have noticed through the. But I have noticed through the years that I've been here, the quarter century I've been in this area, that um our town tends, cannot support big things, and it, it tends to support businesses that are small. And when they get too big, they move on. I think that we should embrace what we are in being um a wonderful place to live and a wonderful place to support smaller businesses that are starting up as I have watched happen through the years. And I have watched the big businesses like MBNA move out of town as they get too big. There, I, I could, I could name a zillion of them. The letter I sent to the select board had um over a dozen points about that history and also about why I support the Crane's Port proposal. I think I would agree with what, how Michael Mullins answered the questions that I addressed uh that I asked him to address regarding how it will stimulate a, will create, um, he didn't use the word nexus, but I'm thinking a community nexus for activity. With the public options, I'm crazy in love with the the barn and with the open side, the bands playing under that roof for, to an open park area with skating in the winter and gathering in the summer. I think there is a lot of real community stimulation. Not only of the open spaces, but also of the entrepreneurial spaces. I believe um Michael Mullins has proven in his other ventures to be very competent in how he can make his vision come true. And um, and I think that he has seen and felt what his not-batty space has um provided, and he's got, um, he's got a lot of confidence based on that experience.
Okay, Anita.
So
Have to get your clothes pretty soon, please.
I, I would ask, I would ask the select board to please uh reread what I sent um in much longer email about these various features and why I think this is a strong proposal. I think building a couple of homes is just not really going to fulfill our much greater need. Building a, a big apartment building is not going to fulfill our community needs in terms of stimulating the community. And I, lastly, I, I would please ask the select board to think in terms of, of not just piecemeal with regard to how we're going to address um affordable housing, but recognize that we have other spaces and other ways to address that in our town, and I agree that it needs to be addressed.
Thank you so much, Anita. Good to see you. Um, on to Representative Duderah.
Why, thank you, Select Board Chair Felciani. Hi, everybody. I want to say thank you to the awesome work that you are all doing on this, and I, I don't know how you're going to do it. There's so many great comments, and all of these are good ideas. I do come down on the side of affordable housing. I feel like it's needed, and uh, I mean, I hear what Anita was saying just before me that uh, you know, it, she talked about a piecemeal approach, but I feel like in my work with Habitat, and I've been on the board for many, many years, even one house makes a difference, two, three houses makes a difference. Um, we, we put them in different places around town. It makes a difference. If we can do more concentrated developments other places, that's great, too. So affordable housing is, is something I feel has to be a part of this. But I also come down on the side of the Tannery, Friends of the Tannery Park and all the work that they've put in and what they've done. But um, but I want to echo that there's a lot of good ideas here. You've got a lot of great comments, and thank you for letting us all have a chance to speak.
It's our pleasure. Thank you. Good to see you, Vicki, and take care of yourself. On to, um, who do we have next, Allison? Is there a phone number?
Jeff Scott is next.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you.
Oh, and now Steve, Steve, I thought Steve Gold was before Jeff, but somehow
He was, but well
Sorry, Steve, that was if
Just when we get him on.
All right.
Go ahead, Jeff. Earth to Jeff. There he comes. Here he comes. There he is.
Sorry.
It's okay.
Jeff Scott, twenty-one Ames Terrace, Camden. I uh, I've really enjoyed this conversation a lot. It's really good. And I really liked the way Ben framed out all the merits of the various um plans. They do all include a space for the farmer's market, which is great. That was Anita.
By the way, Jeff, you should, I hit before, well, you might introduce yourself just to be fair with everybody else.
Oh, you didn't catch that?
I didn't. I missed it.
Uh, Jeff Scott, twenty-one Ames Terrace, Camden.
I missed it. I'm sorry.
So again, the, all, all the, all these, uh, all four of these options include the farmer's market. But we, my understanding is, in the end, we have to put one out for boat, and so that's where we are. Uh, and we can't put off this decision because of the cleanup grant that has a timeline to it. So we, there's some urgency there, too. And so I respect that. I also very much respect all the energy that, not only the select board, but the friends and and gosh, and all the proposals have put into this. It's fantastic. I don't see a great variation in potential tax revenue. It's, one is ten thousand, one's twenty thousand dollars per year. It's not compared to our budget. It's not a huge amount. So I didn't base any of my decisions on, or questions on that. I love the Tannery Park proposal because it's, it's from the ground up, and there's a lot of people who support it. I am concerned there's this aspect to the discussion that hasn't been concerned uh talked about, which is um implementation and maintenance um ongoing. And whether that's, um, do we have to have additional staffing to parks and rec? Does that become a uh a permanent fixture in our budget? Uh, and I, I think we need to think about that a little bit because we need, we can't, I mean, it's great, there's um all these volunteers, but ultimately you're going to have to have a project lead and, and, and the maintenance. The Northland proposal is, is wonderful because it offers all these low-income rental units. Um, and that's appealing because you have low-cost housing close to where people work. And it's also consistent with the comp plan, which has been pointed out. But I don't see us as a really heavy industry town, and I'm not clear on how much demand for local housing there is, local cheap housing. I may be missing the boat on this. But it's not super clear to me. But we are a community, and I, Anita pointed this out of creativity. And that's what the Crane's Port proposal offers is an opportunity for that. Also, something else that hasn't been brought up, which um I just thought of, which is going back to two thousand eight, the Tannery Redevelopment Committee, um, which I was helping with. They came up with a list of acceptable uses for the Tannery property. And we voted on that as a town, and I think Crane Sports is the only one that meets that criteria. They never listed low-income housing. Is that binding on us somehow? So, I don't know.
Good question.
I don't know. That's maybe a, a question.
Good question. I wrote it down. Thank you, Jeff. Thanks for your time, as usual.
All good. All good stuff.
Take care, bud.
Thank you.
On to Mr. Gold.
Thank you. Uh, my name is Stephen Gold. I live at eleven Grove Street, which is around the corner from the Tannery property. Um, I spent two years on the Tannery Work Group. And when the Tannery Work Group started, uh, there was great divisiveness about an emphasis on jobs, an emphasis on income to the town, and an emphasis on park and recreational area for the community. Uh, after two years of meetings with many members of the town and debate, et cetera. Basically, at this point, what I can say is that the Tannery Park proposal completely represents what the Tannery Work Group concluded. That even the hardliners on income and jobs felt uh that that proposal, the mixed-use proposal, was the way to go. The second point I'd like to make is about Northland. We are all in favor of um workforce housing, okay? The question that hasn't seemed to come up yet is to what degree is the town willing to subsidize workforce housing? Now, the Northland proposal uh requires a TIF, asks for a TIF. And according to Northland's own numbers recently published, twelve thousand eight hundred and forty dollars per year would go to the town. Now, to me, for forty-eight apartments, that twelve thousand dollars is not going to cover our infrastructure costs for fire department, police, sewerage department, highway department, all the other expenses of the town that those apartments should pay a fair share of. And yet, in thirty years, uh, Northland will get one million, one hundred and fifty-five thousand, six hundred and sixty dollars. I don't feel that's a good deal for the town. And I haven't mentioned, because in some ways, I think it's also a bit of a moral issue, is forty-eight apartments are going to put a fair number of kids in the school system. Those kids in the school system cost us about twelve thousand dollars per year. Now, you know, one could say, great, let's subsidize the workforce. Others can say, well, we thought we were going to make money on these deals. So my third point is, uh, we do have a department of um planning and development. My comment would be that that department also includes planning. And planning for a community can certainly involve the Tannery Park project to enhance the community, to enhance the uses for the citizens. My suggestion would be as follows. The town has basically, in these issues, three things that they'd like to deal with. They'd like to deal with the park. They'd like to deal with workforce housing. They'd like to deal with uh an entrepreneurial space uh and the farmer's market, which is an entrepreneurial space. I think at this point, it would be great if the selectmen didn't put anything on the June Town Warrant, sat down with the Tannery Park people and Habitat for Housing, and see what kind of a program could be worked out even to further enhance humanities housing project that may include some multifamily housing and may wind up finding more financial support for the community. As far as some of the other needs, I think we really should take a holistic look at both the Tannery site and Sagamore Farms. Eighty acres out there. If we need spaces for people to make things, there's certainly a lot of room out at Sagamore Farms. And if you currently look at Crane's Port,
Steve, I have to ask you to summarize, please.
Okay, I'm going to summarize as Anita did. About two or three minutes worth, you know?
Well, don't, please, let's give you other people's money, please.
Industrial space also makes industrial messes, industrial supplies, et cetera. And I don't think an entire industrial site is going to wind up being the neat thing that you want in the middle of town.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for my time and the extra time.
Good, that's okay. Good to see you, Steve. Take care. Ms. Squibb, Brenda.
Unmuted there. I think I'm signed in now officially.
Now, now we can hear you, Brenda.
Hey, it's great, great. Thanks. I'm Brenda Squibb, live on Central Street. And I have lived in town. Actually, this will give you an indication. We bought our first house in Camden for fifty-two thousand dollars. And so that's how long we've been here, and um, and it was wonderful to be able to buy an affordable house in nineteen seventy-five. And to raise our family here. Um, it's, it's a just a lovely community to live in. Uh, I do think that um affordable housing is a really significant issue for our town. Um, and in, I, I wrote a letter to all of you today because I'm not a typical public speaker, but I just felt the need to speak up as well. I, I, you know, the comprehensive plan written in um, in twenty seventeen, really, the, the housing aspect of it took us back to nineteen ninety-two, saying it had been a significant issue since nineteen ninety-two. And um, and I think if we look at the big picture, as far as the vitality and economic success of our town, we have to look at a lively town that has places for people to live, jobs for people to do, um, schools that are filled with kids. That's, that's what a, an alive community is all about. Um, there's diversity. People live here for the year. They're committed to the place. Um, so I, I really, I think that the Tannery proposal, the park proposal um by the neighborhood folks there is a good one, but I think housing, just whatever we do there has to include some affordable housing. I feel really strongly about that. And I think if we just keep postponing it and thinking it will happen later and happen there and happen over there, it's not going to happen because that's what's been happening. And um, so just wanted to say that. Thank you very much for um looking at all these things and um giving us a chance to express ourselves. Thank you.
Thank, thank you very much, Brenda. And by the way, you're a good public speaker. Thank you. Have a good evening. Uh, next we have a phone number, so I'd like that person to identify themselves. And uh, obviously residency.
So I didn't, um, I didn't see a hand go up for this one, but I just thought, um,
Can you unmute it?
I'm going to ask to unmute.
Well, actually, Allison, it looks like, but I don't know what that symbol means, but it looks like they hung up.
No, that's the
No, that's muted.
Oh, it's muted.
But um, yeah, I just wanted to give them a chance to let them, what is the, to unmute yourself is, what is it?
Start nine?
No, that's raise hand.
Oh.
Somebody that's called in before, what's the, un- mute? Star six. So start, so um, to whoever is on the, the two oh seven, six nine one, eight seven, three, three, if you put in um star six on your phone.
That's it.
We see the
There it is.
Am I in?
Yes, yes, I can hear your voice. Could you identify yourself and so we can make sure we're hearing you and who you are?
Yes, it's Nancy Carl Johnson. And my husband Doug and I live at forty-three Pearl Street in Camden.
Great, Nancy. We can hear you loud and clear, Nancy.
Okay, since nineteen ninety-two. And we've had our company Treekeepers, which we've operated from this location since nineteen ninety-four. I've been active for years with Tree City and Arbor Day. Doug was on the Conservation Commission for twenty-five years, much of it as chair. The Conservation Commission was the earliest organization in town to advocate for a riverwalk um and a park along the McGonigock River. And uh, then I was involved in instrumental in establishing the McGonigock Riverwalk, um, which was approved by a town referendum. And um, it's also been protected, as you all know, with a second referendum that um obligated the town to find a trust organization and preserve it forever. One thing that I don't believe is being considered in, in any of the conversations tonight is the location of the park and of the Tannery property. It's on our river, the McGonigock River, and it's right near the village. And throughout the United States and throughout Maine, other communities have been reclaiming riverfront properties such as Camden has and um turning them into parks overwhelmingly. They've been turning them into parks, community parks for people and not putting buildings on them. There's been a lot of discussion in our community about pollution in the river, pollution in the lot, at, in the harbor, and putting um parking and more buildings on that site near town is really short-sighted and not what we want to do. In fact, we want to now encourage fewer buildings along the riverfront um because we know better than to do that. I've also watched over the years what's happened and admire I've also watched over the years what's happened and admire greatly Tom Ressick, who has had the fortitude to stick with this since I stepped aside. And Eleanor Messon Peters, Steve Gold, Bob Gassett, other people in the community have continued to advocate for the park. The people who worked on the committee, Tannery Committee, for two years under the leadership of Roger Moody, our former town manager, and who came to a consensus during that time about what they wanted and what should be there, which was a park with, and while we all know what was included in that plan. And we all believed by then that that would be followed through on by the people that we elect and the people that we hire to run the town. And instead, it was just completely thrown aside and a new administration, so to speak, a new town manager, a new planning board and development person, a new select board, and probably new people on CDEC all began to mess about with it. And it's been now fifteen, more than fifteen years, and we still don't have a park or anything to really show for what we can do in Camden and what people can enjoy. And hopefully, as someone who worked very hard to see the Riverwalk established, the idea of the Riverwalk, and in fact, if you read the trust document, is not for it to have a lot of commercial development parked right next to it. It will overload the river with pollution and other problems. And I really advocate for the park and the Tannery Park proposal. And I feel, to put it plainly, that Tom and the other people and the who've worked with him and the people who were on the committee for two years have been disrespected by the town not following through with what they wanted.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Nancy. Obviously, you're in favor of the park's proposal for the Tannery, the Friends of the Tannery. Thank you so much, Rich. Good to hear your voice.
You're welcome.
Yeah, well, I think that was the last hand raised. Is that correct, Allison? Oh, no, I'm sorry. I see some repeats now. We can go to repeats, but I want to be careful. We don't, you know, if there's anybody that we haven't heard from that wants to come in, that's a priority first. And to, is there anyone you see, Allison, that's raised their hand again?
It looks like we have a new person.
Yes, we do. Yes, we do. Thank you so much. Whoa, I wonder if it's a voter.
Hi, this is Jeff Deck. Resided thirty-one Lime Rock Street since twenty thirteen. I've resided in Camden since two thousand nine. I love this town. Feel really fortunate to be in a position where I have two young children here, growing up within the village. Made an active choice to be ground myself in a village, to be here, part of a community. It's been great to see a lot of effort to try to deal with this brownfield site and, you know, address this thing and turn it into a positive community benefit. A little background, with my wife and I have been vending members of the Camden Farmer's Market for five years now. And we have been fortunate to transition to the Tannery site. I think it's a great commercial use of the property. We were really happy to see all the proposals include the Camden Farmer's Market. Really curious to see what some of the larger development there would, how they would really, I haven't had a chance to read their responses to all the questions since they were posted today, but I'm curious to see how they're going to address accommodating the market, the arrangements that they'll make in terms of hosting the market if they were to be the chosen path. I'm really excited to see all the comments tonight. I do think that there was some continuity lost. I have been following this, you know, all along. Maybe not back to the Apollo Tannery days, but I've been following it since I've been a resident here. And I think that there's a lot of really interesting ideas. It's great to hear bouncing around and see the town debating what's a priority. I do think it's a very centerpiece property. There's no park anywhere, anything like it here in town. Lake Beach is a really nice spot. It's a very steep hill. You can't really play with kids beyond the new swing sound, which is lovely. The beach is great. It's a really unique spot. We've also got a similar dynamic at Shertail with the slope down to the hill and the water there is the central focus. Not much else can be done there besides picnicking. And I also want to say that, you know, the snowball is a great asset. And I think that the biking community that's coming together out there is really, really promising. And I think that there really is a lack for youngsters in terms of what the town is offering in parks. And I think that this is a lovely site. I mean, we spent a lot of time there as vendors now. And the northwest breezes that come through there in the summertime are nice and cool. You've got the southwestern leaves coming off the water in the bay, and it's really enriching spot. I'd like to see it remain open space for the town, and I'm supporting the Friends of the Tannery Park, my wife as well. So thanks for the time.
Well, thanks for coming on, Jeff. Good to see you. Have a good evening.
You too.
Steve, I can bring you back in, but I want to caution, we want to go round and round. If you have something new to add and also to keep it, and please keep it brief.
Steve Gold, still from Grove Street. Just one minor point I forgot to mention.
Sure.
Previously.
Sure.
And that is that Camden does have a fair amount of subsidized housing. And Rockland has a significant amount of subsidized housing. What I wanted to point out is none of that was built with a TIF. Rockland has two TIF districts and they're strictly commercial property. And reiterate what the previous speaker said, that, yeah, we have a fair amount of parkland, but a lot of it is very specific beaches, hills, et cetera. Thank you very much for this abbreviated time.
Good to see you again, Steve. Take care, bud. I don't, we have, oh, yeah, Eleanor wanted to come back in again. Hello, Eleanor. You're muted, Eleanor.
Figured that out. Could you clarify the process that we're going through now? It was my understanding, I guess, that the town was going to vote on one of these plans, but it appears that, to me now, that you're going to choose a plan and then the town is going to vote on it, or how is that working?
Well, actually, to the process, good question. Tomorrow night on the agenda, we have Tannery Next Steps, and we can certainly define all those answers to those questions. And because there were another number of people who have process questions and didn't ask them, then we're really trying to get the input on preferences and proposals, but tomorrow night we'll be discussing exactly that.
And that's open for public discussion?
Absolutely. It's a board meeting, always open. Like to see your face.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Take care.
Take care.
Are there any other questions? I think that's probably, we can pause for a second and if people want to take a breath, but I think we've covered all the hand raised. And Allison, go ahead. Go ahead.
Yeah, so I.
Oh, yeah, you have one you want to read.
One email from Wyatt McConnell, who wasn't able to make it tonight. I know sometimes we think that these evening meetings are the best.
And do you know relative his address or approximately what street he's on or something like that?
Oh, I was trying to ramble on with my own point about the most convenient time for meetings, and it's not always six to eight P M. for people with kids. But yes, Wyatt McConnell, approximately Ross and Ave.
Thank you, that's fine.
And I think there was a tiny bit of confusion about whether, who to address the comments to. So it's written to Michael Mullins, but I think a lot of it is comments for us.
Okay.
So, Mr. Mullins, I find your proposal the most vibrant and compelling put forward. Having worked on Centennial Campus and Incubator Space affiliated with North Carolina State University, I know how powerful a catalyst location can be when it brings together driven individuals with a range of expertise. A workplace becomes a playground, and we all know the most ambitious and awesome ideas come from the playground, not the workplace. However, as compelling an idea as your incubator space is, the proposal still seems to lack substance in terms of how it will succeed as a business and/or what your vision of an exact exit strategy might look like if it does not succeed. These are questions that likely seem intrusive and beyond the scope of what is fair to ask of a potential buyer of this property. But this property, like everything in Camden, it seems, is a little different. Over the last fifteen years, the town has spent tens of thousands of dollars on workgroup studies regarding what the town would see as an acceptable use of the property. And so when considering two proposals, it's unwise not to weigh the likelihood, not just of what the site will be for the next five to ten years, but what it will look like in twenty-five years or even forty-five years, as was asked at the apartment proposal at the last workshop. Indeed, if your proposal is chosen to be put before voters, the easiest argument against it for those that are opposed would be, his proposal is great, but what about in ten years? What then? Every other proposal has a very clear answer to that question. So my question to you and to smart townsfolk that are inspired by your proposal is, is there a way to structure this such that you maintain the freedom you need as a property developer while providing the town some assurance that the property won't be sold in the next five to fifteen years and converted into a use running afoul of the uses that the various workgroups agreed would be acceptable? Without some attempt to provide assurance on this front, if this proposal is put out to vote in June, I'm afraid I would have to vote against it, despite how exciting it would be for me to go back to living and working in an incubator neighborhood as I did in my twenties on Centennial Campus at North Carolina State.
Great, good. That's kind of got it in. And, yeah, it is difficult with timing sometimes, but I think we have. Yeah, I thought I saw another hand up. Jeremy also have one that needed to be read?
Okay.
Thought he may have sent a message.
I thought I saw that, too.
Jeremy, do you have another one?
It was actually, she actually got on, was it Brenda?
Yeah, Brenda Squibb.
And it was, and I think she provided to you all today.
Yeah, she did, she did.
It was a little more detailed, but in summary, it was what she said.
I needed, you're muted, as I said to Steve, if you have something new to add and also keep it brief, please.
I will try. Thank you very much. I was digging around in my massive files on the Tannery so much that I just didn't read through all of it prior to this. But I wanted to mention that we had a Tannery Site Reuse Committee back in two thousand and five of which, on which I sat, and the proposals were very carefully vetted and finally presented to the Select Board at that time in December. I wanted to mention what those recommendations were at the time, finishing the cleanup, Riverwalk, which wasn't existing at the time. Then the committee agrees that a commercial use of the property is in keeping with the history of the site, clean, non-polluting industry or manufacturing with good paying jobs would be of benefit to the town. The committee supports uses of the site that emphasize and encourage entrepreneurship and the creative economy. This is from two thousand and five. The committee recommends that the town encourage environmentally conscious development on this parcel, for example, taking advantage of river energy resources. In addition, the public hearing suggested low-impact use such as a farmer's market or artist's village. Many members of the committee agreed that mixed use would be a favorable use of the property. The committee recommends that the property maintain its current zoning because we believe this is in the best long-term interest of the town. The committee recommends that the existing street trees remain. So I would agree, the Crane's Board proposal also mentions the two thousand and seventeen previous studies and the recommendations made there. Again, I am very much in favor of affordable housing, but I really think that we can, we need to work. I'm on the planning board. I think we need to work on adjusting the ordinances in the town to enable affordable housing to crop up more.
Thank you, Anita. Thanks. Good to see your face again.
I just wanted to, I just wanted to read that old study. You guys probably haven't even seen it, but we worked very, very hard in that committee as well to come up with those.
Thank you, Anita. Take care. With that, Jeremy, while we're pausing for a minute here, maybe could you just summarize for all listening about the, just to be clear on where the Q and A stuff is on our website, et cetera? So there's no question about that, if anybody wants to spend time going over those answers.
Yeah, I think Allison actually posted on the chat earlier what the website address was. If you go to the town's website, you can look for, I think they call, we call it the Tannery Information Center. It's on the homepage. You just have to scroll down and you'll find it.
Perfect.
There, all the environmental reports are there, CDEC's reports there, Tannery Workgroup Report is there. The committee that Anita just mentioned, going way back to two thousand and five, I think it was when that started, that report's there, all of the information's there, the questions that, all the RFPs there, the proposals are all there. The questions that were asked of each entity are there and their responses are there. Everything should be there. I think, I mean, I think we're covering the basis on trying to get information out to the public.
I was going to say, I did that for two reasons. One is want to make sure everyone knows where it is. But also, I think you all, Audrey and your staff and Jeremy in particular, should be commended for the amount of work you did to get answers to the plethora of questions. And we thank God there was a plethora of questions because there's a lot of interest here. But I think that's a, it's a warm feeling that we have the ability to do that kind of input in addition to these workshops and of course, select meetings also. But thank you very much. Yes, I was suggested to take a two-minute break, and I'm happy to do so. Why don't we make it three minutes? So anybody can take a break, just to take a breather and wash your face, whatever you want to do.
I just need to go run and grab my bottle of water.
We have Mark back. Hello, Mark.
That was very interesting. I really enjoyed listening to everybody.
It's, it was, you know, I didn't add up the number here, but it was nice to have that number of people. And we do have some more hand up. We'll get to it in a minute. I know Jane has her hand up. But, yeah, it's good to listen. That's what this workshop was about, and I think we got what we wanted so far.
Yeah, I also think the process, thankfully, the process worked quite well, letting people in, getting them to speak. It's, technology has become a good friend of ours.
Well, as long as the internet works, you're right. Well, to, to, as long as the internet works, you're right.
Yeah.
But there's no guarantees of that, I've seen disasters occur. But so far, so good.
Oh, we're losing Taylor.
Yep, we did, lost another one.
See, Audrey's smart, she turned her camera off, we don't know what she's doing.
I think Allison's grabbing some water. You're muted, Audrey.
Oh, I was eating, I didn't think anybody would want to watch that, so.
I'm getting hungry, I don't want to watch it, thank you.
You want to get on this, you can get on this.
Hey there.
Oh, wow.
Wow, hi.
Another one.
Hi. Now we're talking.
Yeah.
That's Luke. What a cutie, hi.
Can you tell us how old you are?
Three. How old?
Three? Wow. Cool.
I think that's cool, huh? Alright, you ready to go down? Okay, say goodbye.
Bye.
What a cutie.
Alright, um, Allison, we have, uh, we're gonna begin again, we have Jane Babbitt with her hand up. Is Ms. Babbitt?
Hi, as long as we're all doing this again. I, I don't know if you all heard my scream when the person after me said we have enough green space in town. Um, we don't, and I raised, we raised our kids here, there wasn't enough place for them to play. We now have grandkids who come here, there's no place for them to play. And this site in town, that could be a place for kids to play and families to meet. We don't have enough green space and as Nancy Cottle Johnson said, to build something on a riverfront lot is really going backwards, so we don't have enough green space, we need a playground, we need a family space and, okay, that's it for me.
Jane, good to see you again, take care.
Thank you.
I think at the moment, we seem to have saturated the, um, the hand raising. But, and just for everybody's identification, oh, Van Elson, Mr. Elson. He has a blue hand.
There he is again.
Yeah, I'll, I'll make it short and, but.
Thank you.
It's just kind of funny, I, I talked to Steve, my friend Steve Gold today and brought up that idea of, you know, his um, uneasiness, I guess, with how Crane Sport, you know, what Mike Mullen now has on Mount Patty Street, being messy because there's lots of vehicles outside, and I was really surprised because I find that really neat. I went to the open house there and saw the businesses inside and I ride my bike by regularly to see what different vehicles are out there and what's going on and that's what I mean by a liveliness. I'm also having a memory of the time when there was a gentleman who lived right on Washington Street almost directly across from the Tannery. And for many years, he, when his garage door opened, was open, you could see he was building, people told me it was a jet-powered, it was gonna build, beat the world, you know, land speed record. I mean, it was a huge jet engine on skis and um, that's been the nature of Millville for a long time. I, I'm sort of glad he never started it up that I know of, but I don't know what happened to it, but it was, there's been a, I've always appreciated, I've run a business out of my home. I built a shop, the first thing I did when I built a house. I bought my house, by the way, for ten thousand five hundred dollars in nineteen seventy-eight. It did, I did take it to the recycling center later on, but um, what Mike's got there and his designers is very much in the spirit of this neighborhood and I think be great for the town. Thanks, that's it.
Good to see you again, Ben, you take care.
Okay.
Now, um, again, I'll, you can try to chat for a second, we don't have anybody else with their hands raised, um, and we're at about, well, it's times at seven thirty. Any select board members want to make a comment, please do so, but again, to process and those elements that require select word deliberation that will occur in select word meeting tomorrow. Well, Mark, let me, he doesn't end up for us, Allison, so.
I, I, I just want to say, uh, again, I appreciate everybody speaking up, all the information, all the opinions, it's given me a lot to think about, uh, I've made a lot of notes and uh, looking forward to discussing this tomorrow night.
Awesome.
Um, I mean, I'd fine with me if we want to wait until um, tomorrow night, I think we had said that if there was time left over tonight, um, that we were gonna try to use the remainder of it to, to do a little bit of discussing ourselves, I don't know if there's a, a benefit to at least um, kind of framing what, how we envision the conversation going tomorrow or um, if there's any anything additional that we're gonna need town staff to be prepared with.
Yeah, we did talk about that and I just want to be careful, we don't get into anything we have to deliberate on, that's all, I just, I'm not sure there's anything. But as far as a, a process goes and that kind of thing, that can cause deliberation, but sure, we can talk about anything we want to talk about at this time, Jenna.
I was just going to say, you kind of said it, I, that just, I think outlining the process and calling it good and so that we keep things very delineated about what's happening and keep our, our commitments that we've made um, even in this conversation. Outlining the process, I feel like could be helpful for all of us and those watching.
I've got one question, um, do you all feel like you have enough information at this stage or is there anything that you feel like is still a gap in what you have available to you to um, move forward?
Do you mean in terms of um, information from each individual proposer?
Just any, any sort of information, are there any sort of outstanding questions or issues that you would like us to follow up on?
Yes, I have a question, because of the Riverwalk, is this in a flood zone?
Portion of it is, yes.
Okay.
And do you want any other comment on that or no?
No, I just, I just wanted to know that, I'm, I'm, I want to think about what I've heard tonight and, and talk fresh tomorrow.
The, actually, the whole area really used to be a valley, there's, um, even in like eighteen eighty, when they put the uh, the woolen mill there, it was, there's about twelve feet in a lot of places of fill that was brought in just to be able to create Washington Street and so that would have been like a, you know, floodplain, wetlands and the fact that we, you know, so much of this has been filled in really contributes to our flooding problems downtown and my real vision, if I really had everything just the way I want, would be to excavate all of that back out and try to just return it to a to a wetland, but used to be even more in the flood zone than it is now. Um, I, in terms of questions, um, I don't know if it's gonna be something that, you know, we can be ready to answer, town staff could be ready to provide um, more insight on tomorrow or, or not. But it seems, um, you know, we've gotten a lot of proposals from, from people, but a big part of it now would have to be whether or not we're prepared to say um, define some of this in some kind of development agreement or, you know, some of the, the nitty-gritty of um, whether or not we can get to a place where we would feel comfortable asking voters to weigh in. Um, for me, I can see a couple of different options that I would be comfortable maybe putting before voters, but um, I, I think about like the American Boathouse maybe and the, the development agreement that we have for that property. It was, you know, it really defines, like you have to do this with the property. And is there, I, I don't have the knowledge myself to know of all the different models that would be available to us in terms of, say, um, like with the, the Crane Sport proposal, what mechanisms would we have to, you know, to ask for that could guarantee things like um, the town getting first, um, you know, the option of first refusal on all or part of the site if it were to be put up for sale. Um, are there ways that we could require that, you know, there not be a change of use for X number of years? Have we um, followed up on uh, you know, some of the affordability covenants that might be in place for North London, you know, just some of that stuff that um, would be helpful to know from from town staff, like what kind of tools could, could we request now? Because it's not always up to the proposer to, you know, to think of those things on, on their own, so. In terms of being able to, you know, what, what level of guarantee would we want to be able to provide to people and so.
Uh, any other comments, board?
Hmm, obviously, from my perspective, there's, um, we have four options on the table, um, all have some of the elements you're talking about, Allison, in terms of the, the dotting i's and crossing the t's as we go forward, they all have that element to them. Um, from my perspective, I, I, I think that there's gonna be uh, some discussions, negotiations with whoever is, um, if, if, if someone is voted on, selected for with a Tannery use, um, then it just takes quite a bit of work. Uh, and, and, and numerous elements to it that can't possibly resolve completely right now, but the concepts, I think are sound, I think they're, they're enough you know, bullet points to understand each one, the pros and cons of each one from my perspective, but you're right, there needs to be uh, clear agreement so that the town doesn't get caught downstream with saying, oops, should have, could have, would have, I totally agree. And that, that can be done, for sure. Um, tell me if anything you want to add? Or Jenna?
I should have been thinking of the same thing, Bob, in the sense of, um, you know, for, for sending something to voters for June, which I absolutely think we need to do for a number of reasons. All of the details or negotiations, perhaps, for lack of a better term, um, depending on which proposer um, is sent to voters and whether or not that passes. Yeah, I guess I'd like to hear from town staff, maybe Audrey and Jeremy could sort of give us an outline of what a typical um, and reasonable system would be for having an agreement or a framework with poser for um, how we might negotiate or work things out in good faith, the, the nitty-gritty, as you said, in good faith. As we're preparing to send one of those proposals to voters, knowing that we're not gonna have all those little details figured out before June, but that we need to be moving forward in a direction to make that happen, because I think one of the most important key factors that was pointed out and then um, was also noted again in the CDAC recommendations or um, evaluation was that we should be sending something to voters that has a high likelihood of passing. So that whatever details are figured out with a proposer parallel to that, um, there needs to be some framework in there, so I'd love to hear sort of a thoughtful way in making sure that happens. Yeah.
Well, what Jeremy and I can do, um, for all of them is sort of like come up with a list for you, but it won't be exhaustive, but it'll be sort of the broad sketch of what, what's gonna be required for each one of them to move forward, because there's a number of them that um, say you just choose to put something on the June ballot and get a straight up or down vote on that. I think with each and every one of them, there's additional approvals that will need to be sought in order to implement.
Yeah, I think that's, uh, that's to put out, Audrey, I'm sorry, I interrupted you, I'm sorry.
I was just gonna say, so for, and what we can do by tomorrow is sort of give you what the sort of broad um, outline is of what is gonna be required for each one of them, if they, you know, say, for any one of them, if, if voters were to say yes to them, what are all the other things that need to be done and need to be agreed upon to move forward with it, because I think that's gonna be an important part of your process tomorrow is figuring out, you know, um, how are you gonna send something to voters and are you gonna try to address all the ancillary um, approvals that you need for that project to move forward as well? So is it going to be like a series of votes that you're asking people? Like, you know, so if, do you agree to this proposal, if yes, do you also agree to the development agreement associated with the proposal, if yes, do you also agree to any zoting ordinance amendments, for example, or any additional funding from the town that would be required, all that kind of stuff? That'll be an important thing that, that you all need to make a decision on tomorrow night. I'm not saying you need to know the exact um, warrant article language or anything like that, but it's more of do you wanna, is it something that you're gonna want to tackle all as part of one vote, or do you wanna um, for example, get approval from voters and then go back and tackle this sort of ancillary approvals that you're gonna need?
Right, so it's either, yeah, that makes sense, because you're really saying, are we sequential or are we um, all-inclusive and I, I, I think that's a good point. I think there's also the point of, uh, some people have asked questions about um, you know, financial aspects, you know, if there's uh, deemed some financial impact to the town of anyone that may be selected downstream, uh, we don't get to approve, um, you know, money spent from the town without voter approval. So that, you know, it's an element we have to consider going forward, whatever reason, but it may come out in a negotiation with one of the, uh, with one of the uh, four packages, um, um, that people, gotta remind people, this is a town leading former government and we don't approve something that they haven't approved in a budget. Um, Taylor, go ahead.
Yeah, I know we've talked about it before, but I'd love to be able to put a finer point on it tomorrow night as well, um, the um, cleanup, finishing the cleanup costs for each one, I know that Jeremy put that together in a document, but I think that that's one of the things that's gonna have to happen sooner rather than later, no matter what the proposal is that goes forward. So if there's just a way for us to, while you're putting that together, Roger, for what each item or each proposal has for different items, um, how the cleanup cost would be affecting the cost to the town and the timeline for each of those.
Right, and I think that's a good point, uh, Taylor, to my way of thinking and Jeremy knows this better than I do, but um, when you have a brownfield site, um, if you don't know, well, we have, we have, we have a deadline for DEP to remediate the site, correct, Jeremy? And in that regard, if you, if you both have some concept of what might be being done there, you're kind of gonna do a blanket thing that, you know, we don't have unlimited time to evaluate, example, exaggeration of four proposals and what their detailed impact may be from a civil engineering design that will relate to the real estimation of cost going forward, so yeah, I think there's a, there's a time pressure thing going on here, uh, to my way of thinking because of the remediation of the site. Jeremy, do you want to add to that?
Yeah, I think that's um, a very good point, Bob, and um, time is kind of of the essence in terms of the grant, so I will say what we're doing, um, I think you said it exactly right, it's hard for, we cannot prepare final, um, and we have Steve Dyer on the phone if we want to hear from him too, Bob, um, but we cannot prepare a final cleanup plan until we know what we're going to do on the property. Right, we need to know what's gonna happen and ransom and one of these entities will work together to develop, take their construction details and plans, work together and develop the cleanup. Um, so as we've been, we do have what's called the ABCA, which is the Alternative Brownfield um, Cleanup Plan and the Community Relations Plan that all kind of need to play out and those are happening as we speak. Any day now, we'll be releasing um, the ABCA, which is what has to be done, it's a public process and so ransom is finalized theirs and what they did is they looked And so ransom is finalized theirs. And what they did is they looked at every one of the proposals because we're in this place and we just need things to move along. So we're moving that public aspect of the cleanup grant along. It's going to just lay out in the next little bit. But they did look at every proposal because we knew where we were with the process. So I'm just letting everyone know that currently we're moving on track with EPA requirements because we are looking at all of the proposals as part of the ABCA.
Allison.
Now, I mean, the responsibility to clean up the site is, would transfer with the property, I assume, if we were to sell it. And so I, I guess I'm a little bit confused in some ways about the level of intertwining with, between the grants and the development proposal. I can certainly see that the funds that we have available through that are, you know, could be beneficial to any one of the proposals, but for, for all of them, the total costs of the necessary cleanup exceed the amount of grant funding that we have. And so it's, that responsibility is going to lie with, for the additional costs above and beyond what we have in grant funding is going to lie with the developer. And for the case of the riverbank portion of it, you know, that's a little, a little foggy, but that appears at this point to reside with the town. And so have we made any, my strong preference would be to use as much of the fund, the grant funding as possible for any portion that we know the town is going to be responsible for, no matter what. And is there flexibility to say let's make sure that we redirect as much of that funding as possible to the, to the riverbank, rather than have it be, you know, if, if $100,000 is left, if $60,000 is left, that's a, that's kind of a small portion of the total costs for any developer. But for us, it's fair, you know, might be more significant, but so I guess that's something that I would need more clarity.
Jeremy, you can comment with that if you'd like to. If, what, would you, do you want to wait until tomorrow? It's up to you.
Yeah, I mean, I think waiting, but however, Allison, I think we can skin this cat in many different ways.
I agree. But I think it's an excellent, excellent statement. I think it's absolutely part of the thinking process that we have to have. We've done any brownfield thing. I, yeah, we have limited funds left.
I mean, I didn't see from those, from, in the proposals, any specific requirement for the amount of funds that they would need from the town toward the cleanup. And I don't know if that is a result of them not fully understanding the scope of the cleanup that would need to happen, or if we feel, I guess it would be good to know, do we, do we feel really good about any one of these proposals? And the total, you know, the knowledge that they have about the total responsibility for cleanup, so that there's no, you know, surprises.
You just hit a nail on the head, Allison. I agree with you. That's that element. Let me get to Taylor here before we run out of time.
I totally agree on this discussion. I think, again, kind of what I would love to see tomorrow is that if we just take a couple of minutes, so perhaps Jeremy can briefly summarize, given with the information that we know now, realizing that there's more detail that we have, but what we know now with each proposal, for proposal number one through four, here is the estimated cost for the cleanup, the scope of the cleanup based on the use and the possible cost of the town, and then whatever the possible cost might be to a private developer or a different group. As we have.
Good, yeah. Given the level of information we have in these proposals, is that even possible, Jeremy?
I would say no, and I think that's why.
What's the, what's the document you sent us last week, Jeremy? Were those some?
Well, if you want me to, if you want me to go over that, Steve Dyer and I can probably go over that document, the estimated costs of the cleanup. We could certainly.
Well.
Magnitude, that's an order of magnitude estimates. And you got to understand that ransom tried to develop that based on their best understanding of construction methods and cleanup requirements and the use. And they didn't really, they didn't have construction details. I mean, most of the detail that they could probably surmise came from the Northland project because it is the project that it is. But certainly, the other ones didn't have any construction details, so they couldn't take that and put it into a plan. So yeah, we can work to get there, Taylor.
Yeah, I think it's important to understand that that was an engineering terminology swag, a sophisticated. Yes, because they don't have plans from foundations. They can't, they have to make assumptions of what's being excavated and not being excavated. And then we're not going to have that tomorrow night. We're not going to have that for a couple of months until they have the civil engineering work. And no matter which proposal we decide to go forward with or, or vote on or whatever, that, that's going to be some time before you have that kind of information. But if there is, again, to my point about financial, if there is in any of these elements exposure to the town, we have, we have to get approval for that. So that's, this, this could be to Audra's point. This is, this is just a vote. If we go to a vote for a, an option in June, there are other elements that we have to address beyond just the preferred proposal, assuming the vote is proven, of course, and not the least of which is financial. Correct, Audra?
Yes.
Right. I mean, there's no, no chance, there's not time for a zoning change before June.
Correct. Yeah, that's correct.
And, right. So can we even put forward to voters something that would require a zoning change, knowing that we don't have time to go through that planning board process?
Correct.
No, I mean, I would recommend that you've, you know, you first tackle what you want to do with the site and then all the ancillary approvals that you're going to need to move that proposal forward. We do it like a special town meeting later on.
Yeah, I think it'd be a good idea to have a, by proposal, a little bullet list of the ancillary approval because obviously there are some that require rezoning or those kind of changes to ordinance and some that don't. But that's important because, yeah, it's, it's not a one stop shop. People should understand that. But and it was a full evening. Are there any other comments we'd like to make? Because we'll be addressing a lot of this tomorrow, but in terms of the process going forward on our, on our select board agenda. All good.
I suggest we all get a good night's sleep.
Oh, okay. Well, you don't have to make any motions here, guys. But anyway, yeah, there was a great discussion. I want to thank all the public again at this, so for listening for all their input. That's what was the purpose of having this workshop for the select board, wanted to solicit public opinion, and we got it. And I think that's great. And that's, I think that this process has been rather impressive in terms of reaching out and the, and the phases that the board recommended some months ago, when we talked about a three-phase approach, turned out to the fourth phase, fine. That's, that's the way it evolved. It's evolved very well. So tomorrow night is where the rubber meets the road, I guess. And see where we go from there. Any other comments, all y'all? And I agree with Mark, get a good night's sleep and have, I want to go home and have dinner. Because I'm hungry. But thank you so much for all, for your time this evening and also the public again. And good night.
See you all tomorrow.
Thanks, guys.
Hey, everyone.
Thanks, guys. Good night.
All right.
That was pretty good.
Yeah.
I'm glad we had, you know, I counted about 40 people.